Yeah, different things. But I hope that they stay okay.
Now it's seven o'clock. Can we please rise? Pledge of allegiance.
All right, pledge allegiance, certify of the United States of America. Answer the republic for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As customary, we're going to have a moment of silence. And this is going to be a tough one because William Caposio, Bill Caposio was on our finance committee and I worked with him eight, nine years when I was on the finance committee until I became a selectman and then he took over as chairman. But he passed away last week and I just keep him in your thoughts and your prayers, please. Thank you. I need to make the announcement that this is being recorded by televised and televised by WHCA. I'll need a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a, I need a motion to accept correspondence in the read file. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public forum, is there anybody here that wishes to speak in public forum? They're all outside speaking. Seeing none, okay. Approved meeting minutes of open session April 7th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to accept the minutes for open session April 15th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Swearing in ceremony of Whitman Police Department Officer Adrian Caffrey and Officer Derek McCartney. If I said that right, I apologize if I didn't. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome both officers as they begin their journey through a career in law enforcement here at the Whitman Police Department. Officer Cafferty came from the exciting world of landscaping services prior to coming on with us. Officer McCartney was a corrections officer at the Plymouth County House of Corrections. Both officers attended the 78th ROC at Plymouth Police Academy, attended five months of training, and are now involved in field training for the next several months. The officers have both been certified by post commission upon graduation. And they're here to be publicly sworn in by the town clerk.
All righty. Can you please raise your right hands? Ready? You can look at me. I don't know what you're staring at, but you can look at me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dr. Cafferty.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
Of Massachusetts.
Of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession.
I promise to bring to my profession.
The standard of quality and integrity.
Standard of quality and integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs of my office. So that the conduct of my affairs.
So that the conduct of my affairs.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of patrolman on the Whitman Police Department.
In the position of patrolman on the Whitman Police Department.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of patrolman may be subject. To which the office of patrolman may be subject. Right. I state your name.
Aye, Dr. Cafferty.
And solemnly swear and affirm.
Sow and swear and affirm.
That I will perform the duties.
And perform the duties.
And incumbent upon me.
And incumbent upon me.
As a patrolman.
As a patrolman.
For the town of Whitman.
For the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ask for your back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good luck, stay safe, congratulations. Congratulations, stay safe.
We're all set. It's glad to see two new guys on the force.
Awesome.
And use the help. It's not yet 7:15, so let's jump into a little bit of old business. Chief here? Okay. Under old business, the first item under old business where it is not yet 7:15 for our joint meeting is recognition, recognizing the retirement of Mary Kochi from the position of crossing guard special constable. She is retiring after 11 years of service. We have a proclamation. I will read it, but we need one more person to sign it, so we'll have to wait on it before we give it to you. We'll get it to you one way or another once Kyle signs it. But this is whereas Mary Kochi, if I'm pronouncing it right, has retired from the position of crossing guard special constable for the town of Whitman effective June 30th, 2025, having served the town for nearly 11 years. And whereas Mary has served for the town, served the town honorably, faithfully, efficiently, and with dedication, all the while carrying out her duties in a manner, in a manner that is a credit, not only on her, on herself, but to the town of Whitman as well. And whereas the valued service and untiring devotion of Mary Kochi has not gone unnoticed or unappreciated, and she will be sincerely missed by her retirement. And whereas the select board on behalf of the grateful community does hereby commend Mary Kochi for services rendered to the town. And the select board on behalf of the citizens of the town of Whitman extend heartfelt gratitude to Mary and wish her many years of good health and happiness in her retirement and any future endeavors that she wishes to pursue. As I said, as again, Kyle is not with us at this point, so when he gets to sign it, we'll get this to you. But thank you, thank you, thank you for what you've done. Now the chief can go on.
This is going to be a little bit shorter than that. So Mary Izzy, as we call her.
Yep.
She's accompanied by her other crossing guards. They're really a tight-knit group. They pitch in for each other, they cover each other's positions when necessary, so they work together very well. So she started temporary in 2014 and then she moved into a position of a full-time crossing guard. And as of now, she's on standby, so she still could fill in, although that would be in a real pinch, I think. The duties of crossing guard involve keeping our most precious commodity safe. That's the youth of our community here. And Izzy performs spectacularly and we appreciate her dedication to service. In fact, today I was informed that she called in a car crash, so she's still very vigilant. An appreciation of her service, Deputy Chief Bombardier had this plaque made. Town of Whitman Police Department presented to school crossing guard Mary Izzy Kochi an appreciation of your many years of service. Congratulations on your retirement from your friends at the Whitman Police Department and crossing guards as well.
Go on up with that show. You ready, girls? Get in there tight. Got you. Excellent.
I would like to thank the Whitman Police Department for having me and the select board for entrusting me with the care of our students in the town. Thank you very much and reappoint me every year.
She also did it at Route 18 and Route 27. Right, that's probably one of the busiest intersections and I'd see her there in the morning. Yeah, outstanding.
I don't know that I'd do the next one. It might take too much time. Couple onto new business.
Yeah, well, we can, I think we're too early for the bell and boy.
In four minutes.
Huh?
A little early. I'll take a few.
Okay, so we'll jump into some new business. Whitman Cultural Council requests for additional police officer during Whitman Day event.
Sure.
Does the chief want to speak on that?
Juliana's here.
You could direct her to the mic up front here.
Where is she?
Oh, Sharon, he knows.
Yeah.
Got a request, chief.
What's that?
I say, no.
No, I just brought notes.
Go ahead, yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Juliana Dunn. I'm on the cultural council, have been for a few years.
Welcome.
For anybody who doesn't know, cultural council gives out about $12,000 a year in grants to organizations.
Shut the door. Am I shut the door?
To nonprofits and artists. In addition to that, we do the summer concerts, which many folks come on Thursday nights. But Whitman Day is done four years and we're going into our fifth. Four years ago, Whitman Day started as a way to celebrate all of the Whitman community for nonprofits, clubs, and other organizations to come out and set up booths, tell people what they do. There's live music, games for kids, touch a truck, food trucks, and artists selling their wares doing crafts. We've done this on a shoestring and have been successful in raising some money to help this event happen. The crowds are typically 2,000 to 3,000 people, although the rain last June did not, did not bring those numbers. It was unfortunate, but it's been a really successful event with lots of people coming out and lots of families. The town has been wonderfully supportive of the DPW workers helping throughout the day. One area that we think needs improvement is the public safety piece. We've only had one officer that's been on site that oversaw the beer garden for the past two years. And we've been fortunate, there's not been an issue with any public safety issues for the past four years. But that officer was pulled away at one point because a kid got lost. And so I've looked online and there seems to be some varying guidelines about what's recommended for festivals, but it's something like one officer for every 50 people, which would be a significant presence at Whitman Day. I would be happy to, we haven't, we've been in sort of conversation with the police just about how much it would cost. I don't have a number for you. We'd like to work with the police to find out what they would recommend. In my mind, I think it's maybe two officers throughout the day, just kind of around. Kids get lost or there's never been a problem, but if there's a problem, to have presence. I think it's also, I worry just about the liability as sort of probably one of the largest things that Whitman does. It is a town event, we're a town-appointed committee, and so we're asking if this selectman could support covering the public safety costs, whatever those might be, for next year, for 2026.
And that's for next year's budget or this year's budget? Would it be?
No idea. It'd be this year's budget.
Oh yeah, June, this fiscal year.
We have any idea what it would cost? Chief, we have maybe two, three police officers?
Who's working and what their rate of pay is or overtime? It's all overtime.
What about provisional police officers, specials? No?
We go through full-time officers first.
Okay. What do you think? Okay? Deal with it? Anybody? Yes?
Have you thought about informal security? Like volunteers that would put on like a yellow shirt and kind of walk around, like not formally trained officers, but people who work specifically at the festival just to like help with supervision and that kind of thing?
We actually, our committee has a few volunteers. We have not been very successful and we'd be happy to have any number of volunteers. When we have had a slight issue with kids that were in a bouncy house, we couldn't argue them out of it, they just wouldn't listen to anybody, and I suspect anybody with a vest, same thing. We just think that we'd be great if we had volunteers, we just don't have those numbers of people.
The bind that we're in, like with road races, last year we, we had to cut back on road races just because we didn't have the money and the budget to support, you know, those events, you know, with the current budget. So I think Whitman Day is outstanding. It's one of the best events, I think, that we, we host and it's extremely well-attended, but right now the budget is tight. We can maybe bring some about it, you know, but it's not looking great for next year, that's for sure.
I can just put this in perspective. So on Whitman Day, this year was on the 14th of June. We had Officer Powers at the beer garden, that's a paid-for detail. That's not covered by the town or the police department budget. Officer Howie did the touch a truck with a cruiser and he worked the midnight to eight shift and then came back at 10 o'clock. Sergeant Harrington also worked the event, he also worked the midnight to eight shift and then came back for this event. This year Whitman Day was tucked in between the 150th events that went on with the road race that we needed additional support from the surrounding towns to cover for public The 150th anniversary concert and fireworks were supposed to go on the 14th also, but they were canceled due to weather. And then the following Saturday was the anniversary parade that we had, which occupied a number of officers for that as well. So three weekends in a row, we had events going on. That's going to tax our department because this is in addition to their regular shift. It's not part of their regular duties or anything else. Also on Saturday, we held our in-service CPR and first responder for our auxiliary unit because they normally have other jobs, so they're only available to do these things on the weekends. So that was the day for that. So they were tied up doing in-service. For anyone who works shift work, weekends, it's more of an appreciation when they have a weekend off. And these three weekends in June at the end of the fiscal year posed an additional problem this year. But I'm going to kind of put this in perspective. So this Whitman Day event was covered by the three previously mentioned officers. Just came off midnight shifts on a regular complement of officers. We have an officer on the desk and we have three cruisers on patrol for the entire town. So if you're looking at one officer for every 50 people.
We don't have it.
That's, that's not going to happen.
I'm not suggesting that that was.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just filling in the blanks here, so. You know, policing isn't Monday through Friday, it's also on weekends, and when these officers get a weekend off, you can imagine, and it doesn't happen every weekend, they work a rotating shift, so their days off aren't the same from week to week. So every third week or so, they'll get a weekend day off and it progresses from there. So the Whitman Day event had three officers and then in addition to cover the rest of the town, we had the same amount, three officers. So sometimes if we go shorthanded, there's only two officers on the road. Like last week, when we had the missing person, we had a desk officer and two officers on the road. And when someone goes missing, then we call in additional resources. So if something happens, we have that ability to call somebody in. So just to fill that shift, on that day shift, there were two officers out that were filled with overtime from a small number of remaining officers who were available to work. And we were shorthanded, the two officers we just swore in, they're not even ready to go on shift yet. So we're down two bodies right now from a full complement of our officers. So I just want to kind of put in the perspective here, the budget doesn't cover filling these things, so I'm kind of at a loss as to.
So would you say like, say three officers on hand would be sufficient? Because I was wondering if there's businesses that are setting up areas, you know, maybe we can ask them for donations to help pay for that. You know, or something like that, you know, like businesses, if they're promoting their work area, their businesses, whether it's the bank or restaurants or whatever, because we don't charge.
No, there's a lot of infrastructure costs to putting on Whitman Day, the sound system, renting, you know, the stage, there's, you know, there's, there's all, we're just, there's only five of us or with a few other volunteers trying to, and we do solicit businesses and so forth, we do have sponsorships and so forth. We're just worried that we have, you know, with that many people showing up at a public event and it's a town event, that we're worried about the liability and we're worried about coverage. I'm not asking for an answer tonight, I'm just saying we're concerned and happy to have the conversation and see where it goes.
Dan.
Yes.
The Lions Club I saw is starting up. Do you think that that's, you know, a pretty significant organization? I don't know where they are in their planning. It seems to be a gentleman that's putting it together, seems to run a lot of them by what I researched on Facebook quickly, so I don't really have an answer answer, but they're volunteers and they're top-notch. I do understand that you don't think people in a vest really gel with the attitude of some of the people, but I really find that people are respectful and that if you have enough people, if you had two gentlemen or women, you know, I don't want to sound like it couldn't be a woman's role, that are there, that's better than one. So if a kid wants to say, or an adult wants to say, geez, I don't want to follow your rules, two people are a little bit more scary than one to make you follow the rules, if you know what I mean. But I think they do all volunteer work, but I think if we had time, we could come up with, well, I know I have a son that is like a bouncer type, I would volunteer him myself right now. I have a partner, ACO partner that's over there, but I don't dare say it. But we could find people to help because our budget is, it doesn't even exist almost. And I do understand your concerns, we would all have the same concerns, like you said, it's a town event, but Chief Handland can't obviously make himself that short-staffed. So I think maybe with some volunteers and some, really some thought to it, we could get enough people that it would help you.
Well, I welcome that conversation. I actually did talk to the guy who was trying to restart and he said he didn't have any volunteers, that he was, that the Lions Club was him basically.
Well, maybe we should start advocating for him to get some.
I welcome all of the ideas for volunteers because I had approached lots of clubs in town asking for volunteers and I got one or two.
And what day is this on?
I'm sorry? It's always the second Saturday in June.
Second Saturday in June, which we won't have all the other events going simultaneously as we did this year.
The joint meeting, right?
Yeah, I don't need to take any more time, I just want to have a conversation that I want us all to be safe and I don't want.
Okay, I guess the easiest thing to do is to come up with a figure and get ahold of Mary Beth and see if there's any way that we can deal with it.
Once, I think getting more information is great and then we can maybe bring it back to a future meeting. We have plenty of time before June.
Yep, okay.
That's why we're starting now.
Perfect. Good idea. I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, we're a little bit late.
Sorry.
Thank you.
That's fine. We have a scheduled meeting, a joint meeting with the planning board for the purpose of interviewing Jeff Sergis, I guess pronounced, I apologize if I spelt it, said it wrong, for interim appointment in order to fill one vacancy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess, I don't know.
That works.
Sorry that we're a little bit late.
Don't worry. Push it on the rug.
Okay, I guess, do they need to open their meeting?
Yes.
If you're going to call them, so you might want to open your meeting and from that point, the table is yours.
Melissa, do we have to record our meeting for Melissa or?
If she can take the minutes one way, this will be recorded and televised, so.
Okay. So I will call our planning board meeting to order. We are being recorded for public access and YouTube television, so the only other thing on our agenda tonight is to appoint Jeffrey to our board. We have an open seat from Wayne Andrews. I met Jeffrey at Whitman Day and after talking to him a little bit, I asked him to fill an application. He was the only one to apply, but that one is all we need.
So, so your recommendation is that we appoint him?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, very simple, does anybody else speak on it?
Do we have some questions?
I mean, I had just one question for you, you have a very impressive resume. I was just curious how you would handle potential conflicts, I don't know if you do any work for anyone looking to build in town or?
In town, it's mostly around Boston, Boston proper, so.
Okay.
But I guess I would have to refuse myself if that were the case, so.
Yeah, there's obviously practice in place to handle that, but just wanted to make you aware.
All right.
That was it.
Right, so do I hear a motion to appoint them?
That was my only question too, was a potential conflict of interest in, do you do a lot of 40Bs, 40As, 40Y's?
Not a lot, I have done two or three 40Bs in the past, yes, but I wouldn't say a lot.
That it?
Dan?
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, Mary Beth, do you have anything?
Yes, so this is to fill out the term which expires in May of '26, so I assume that you would be interested in then running for the position for the next term. And so papers will come out the last week, I believe, in January each year, and the election is in May, so.
And then I believe it's a joint vote, I don't know, we should have probably looked up the regulations, but yeah.
I wasn't sure on that.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we'll do ours and then they can do theirs.
That's fine.
All right, we've already made our motion, second on the for selectmen, all in favor?
Aye.
Go for it.
We have a motion to appoint Jeffrey to our empty spot.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second, all in favor? All right.
There you go, congratulations. Thank you very much for volunteering.
People get sworn in at the clerk's office before taking any action on the, on the board.
Thank you so much. And if you want to think about Whitman Day, please do.
I will volunteer for anything the town needs.
God bless you.
So.
Thank you. That's right, start on the list right now.
I could be in the list.
All right, next.
You too.
All right, next on the agenda is under old business is the decision of Animal Control Officer Determination in connection with the dog hearing held on August 19th, 2025. You're going to have to.
Yes.
Choose yourself. And what I would like is for both of our ACO officers to come up with their, their advice on how we should deal with this. We've had, we've had the meeting, we've had it, and this is not, we're not going to continue with the hearing. We're just going to ask what your advice is and what your outtake is and what you recommend and we'll see if we agree with you or not.
They went out for a visit.
Huh?
They went out for a visit to the home.
Yeah, they, you did the investigation, so who wants to start? Welcome, Joe.
How's it going, guys?
Hi, Joe.
Sitting today, I guess. So my name's Joe Kenny, animal control officer in town. We did go out and do an inspection of the property on what Whitman have, am I confused? Yeah, I got the wrong street, but.
Huh?
They went out for a visit to the home.
Yeah, they, you did the investigation, so who wants to start? Welcome, Joe.
How's it going, guys?
Hi, Joe.
Sitting today, I guess. So, my name's Joe Kenny, Animal Control Officer in town. We did go out and do an inspection of the property on what Whitman Ave. Am I confused? Yeah, I got the wrong street, but. Yeah, Washington Terrace, yeah, sorry, Washington Terrace. And when we went out there, we inspected like the backyard gates. It's fenced in, the entire backyard with a five-foot chain link fence. There's, at the end of the driveway, where the access to their back deck is, is an enclosed pen. So, you actually go through one gate, you go inside of a set of fenced area, and then you'd go back into the backyard, which is where the dogs allowed out. There's a secondary access for a vehicle access if needed on the other side, but that side of the gate is locked up. And then, on the inside of the house, there's where the dog had gotten loose in the past. There's a gated area set up, so you go through one gate, you step into a enclosed small area, and then you open the door and you can go outside, but there's a secondary gate in front of the door. So, it's through a gate into a closed-off area, then you open the gate and you can go out the door. So, he's got a double gated section there as well. The dog wasn't there when we were there. The dog was out getting groomed, so we couldn't see the dog in action in there. But from anything I could tell, I own dogs, and it seemed like it would work. The gates seemed like they're in good working order. The fencing's pretty new, and that seems in well-repair. Other than that, that's about all we saw.
Laura, do you have anything to say?
Well, I would say that the yard was immaculate. I would say that the gentleman and his family have done the best they can by this rescue dog. A lot of times when you have rescue dogs, it's very unique situations. And I have honestly, I'm swearing on my grandfather's grave right now. I've never actually seen a family go to such lengths to seek out what best fits this dog because animals are energy. And when Joe described the gates, I want you to understand that this is the door the dog only got loose from. And there's a door, a gate, another gate, and then a separate area. I don't feel that the dog is a danger. I feel that dogs react. And I think this family has done a phenomenal job at trying to do the right thing, but things happen. In my opinion, I don't think anything's going to happen again. And I would hope that the residents could all come back together because everyone has legitimate concerns. But animals are animals, and everybody, they're property, and your law looks at them as such. And we cannot, as animal control officers, go in and just say, you know, you're going to do, you know, get rid of your dog, or you're going to do this. The dog had a challenge in the beginning. The gentleman, as he said, was undergoing some medical treatment at the time. And I think the heightened energy of that alone is actually what made these things occur.
So, what do you suggest?
So, I.
Anybody else's hearing?
I, in most of these cases, usually suggest if the dog's found as a dangerous dog, that the dog be recommended to walk on a leash with a muzzle if it's walked on public roadways, and that the dog be in a fenced-in area, which he does have. I can't say one way or another on this. If I'd say it's a dangerous dog or not a dangerous dog, it's kind of up for you guys to decide. I think in this case, there's a lot that goes into it because there's a lot of variables. And it kind of depends on what you guys feel.
I just want to add to that, that it's, and you can look into this if you want to hold off your decision, but it is truly never recommended to muzzle the dog because it's going to make the dog more aggressive, and it's also going to make people more fearful, which if you think about energy, if someone is fearful, then what energy are they letting out? I don't think that it's ever fair to even consider a dog a dangerous dog that has been loose three times and not once actually did, you know, go bite this, you know. A dog had to have a visit to a vet. My own dogs, together, have had to have a visit to a vet. Dogs are animals, they're not people, and we cannot put ideas in our head that we think we can change that. I think if you put a muzzle on this dog, I think you would actually be making this dog more aggressive and making it more a problem. I definitely, if there was another incident, then I would recommend a kennel that was, instead of the five, six-foot fence, that was like a 10-foot enclosed kennel with a roof with a cement bottom. And you could even recommend that now, but I certainly would recommend that if the dog ever got out again. I don't believe it will, but I don't have a crystal bar.
Okay, so what you're saying is, with, what the owner of the dog has done with the gates and to make sure that the dog will not get out again is sufficient?
Yes, and what he has done with training.
Right.
What he has done with his research, what he has done to go, like Joe said, that we did not see the animal. Well, that is true, but the reason that we did not see the animal is because the gentleman is so, like anybody, animals are people's children. He's so nervous that he feels his inner anxiety will then, the dog will feed off of. That's exactly how dogs act. And he sought out a, a service for grooming. Over time, the first groomer he went to prior, you know, getting the dog three, four years ago, it wasn't the right fit for the dog, and that man knew it. And then he searched out a groomer that this dog gets along great, they work better together. So, this gentleman is taking his own initiatives in the whole aspect of owning this dog before and after these events happened.
Okay, does anybody else have, yes?
And I would just, I don't have any questions, but I think it, it probably makes sense for the board to take no action right now.
Right.
I think it's been, you know, there were a number of incidents in, I think it was like a two-year timeframe, thinking back to a three-year timeframe. There were corrections made. I don't believe the dog's gotten out since. It seems like they're appropriate corrections, so I think it's, it's, you know, it helps that this was brought forward before the Board of Dangerous Dog Hearing. It's documented now, if something were to happen again, we've got a whole backstory and can take further actions. But at least now, I, I don't think it would meet the definition of a dangerous dog. I don't think we would need to take an action to call it a nuisance dog when there's already corrective steps being taken, so I, I think we sit tight.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so, so a motion is that, we've heard it, and take no action.
Yeah.
Have anything to say, Mary Beth? You also with that?
No, no, I wanted to see how the report came back and all the information.
Okay, so we have a motion to take no action, and it was been second. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Good night, Joe.
Where am I? Okay, Act on Request of Tim Travis to be appointed to the position of Associate Member for the Board of Appeals for a two-year term through June 30th, 2027 in order to fill an existing vacant vacancy.
So, moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Tim here? I guess not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's also the Wayne Andrews vacancy. I think that's also Wayne Andrews's vacancy.
Yeah, Act on Request of John Galvin to be appointed to the position of Member-at-Large Economic Development Committee for a three-year term through June 30th, 2027 in order to fill an existing vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
So, moved.
Any questions? John really say anything? Thank you very much, I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all set. Thank you very much for volunteering.
I'll second that.
I was going to say, I know when you.
Oh, there was no second, sorry about that.
I wanted to say it, but I didn't want to interrupt you.
You always second it, and I figured.
Well, this time Sean got the second, you got that right.
Yeah, Act to appoint Heidi Hosmer to the position of Member of the Board of Assessors, Representative to the Economic Development Committee for a three-year term through June 30th, 2028 in order to fill an existing vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
So, moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There you go. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, bye. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Act on the resignation of Richie Rosen from the position of Member-at-Large of the Economic Development Committee effective June 20th, 2025.
August 20th.
Huh? Do I hear a motion?
August 20th.
What did I say?
June.
Okay, sorry, August 20th, 2025. Wanted to keep him on for another month.
So, moved.
Do I hear a motion?
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion?
I would just like to thank him for all his service.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now if we, if we said no, he'd have to stay on it.
Well, you already appointed a new member at large.
Or you always have an extra one. And Veteran Service Officer Declare, Officer Declan Ware, Veterans Day. Mary Beth?
Declan Ware, our Veterans BSO, would like to address the issue of the Veterans Day Parade.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Talked about this.
I'm coming to the Select Board today regarding the, the Veterans Day Parade. So, it's come recently to my attention after speaking to Abington that they kind, they're under the opinion of they don't really want anything to do with the Veterans Day Parade. My, my honest recommendation is that we kind of, we, we, we shift going forward in the future where I'm proposing a, instead of the parade, we do like a formal ceremony into a luncheon sort of event for the, for the veterans. And I, in, in part of that decision-making, a lot of that had to do with when we just look at our veterans population in the town, I mean, it is an aging population. You know, it's in November as well. I, I know, you know, as a veteran, you know, I know I would appreciate a, a, a formal ceremony and a luncheon. My recommendation is that we could, we could definitely do this, this November. However, if we still want to go forward and do the parade this November, we can do that as well. And then going forward in the future, starting next year, I think the parade going forward in the future is, is, is not looking, you know, too good, to be quite honest.
I think that if we had a dinner, right, and recognizing the, the veterans.
Yes.
At that dinner by a speech or something, you know, something. I think we've done something like that before at the, like the, the VFW.
Yes.
Right, and we've had, that place was filled right up.
Yeah.
And it's just to thank them for what they've done for the country. And maybe if they want to speak, if they want, whatever, you can put it together. But I think that would be the way to go rather than a parade.
I, I, I think, what I envision is, I still want a formal color guard. We go in with all the branches of, of the armed forces, we can put them in the ground. We can go up, people are more than welcome to come up, thank, thank the veterans for, for their service, deliver whatever remarks they want to give. I envision like a formal, we do like a cake-cutting ceremony, like all the branches do, you know, on the, on the branch birthdays, but we get a cake with all the, the, the branch insignias on them, and then we do like a formal cake-cutting ceremony into a luncheon. It's a, it's a camaraderie day, I, I, I think. That's, that is what I envision.
So, basically, what we do now is just not the parade. Yeah, and just add the dinner instead of the parade. Yeah, you can come up with some way of doing it and, you know, we'll see, yeah.
I, I really like your idea because it's been sad to see that sometimes there's very low turnout rate, whether it be the weather or graduation times or whatever happens at people's, for different events. And you might see one there and three here, and I think this would give them more a feeling of the true respect we all do have. I don't think there's anyone that doesn't appreciate and respect our veterans. So, I really like this idea, and I think it would really take off well. I appreciate your time in it.
Would you still do the cemeteries?
We, we will still, we will still, for, for Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so for, I, I propose no, no changes for Memorial Day. I think, you know, it's a Memorial Day of beautiful May Day.
That's straight town anyway.
And that's, that's a town event.
And it's multi-things.
And, and, and that's easy to control, you know, just because that is a town event. And I, I propose this, this luncheon sort of event the Saturday, November 8th. And I, I'm saying Saturday because I, I don't really want this to be, you know, on Veterans Day during, during the week. I want, just in case, you know, some of our younger veterans, if they are there, they could be working on Veterans Day. Whatever they, maybe they're firefighters, maybe they're police officers, whatever, whatever the case is. I, I envision this on a, on a Saturday so we can maximize turnout to this event.
Good suggestion.
That's excellent.
Yes.
And I just, you mentioned Memorial Day, so maybe it is worth asking. If we're going to, are we sure it makes sense to get, to keep the Memorial Day Parade and get rid of the, the Veterans Day Parade? Or would you rather flip it and do more of a solemn ceremony? Memorial Day, we already do the cemeteries, turn that into an event, and then keep the, the town take over the Veterans Day Parade? It would be kind of flipping the, the process, but.
Isn't Memorial Day the tri-town?
No, 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 the.
Well, more, excuse me, the Memorial Day is strictly Whitman.
Correct.
Right, so, and we can do, you know, everything, and it's, it's the fact that Veterans Day, the two other towns, they don't think there's enough of a turnout as we do it in each town, so.
And it sounds like, yeah, Abington's, you know, their budget's worse than ours. They're probably looking at where to, to dial back.
Yeah, and so I, I still have my budget aligned for this year, so I mean, that, that, that money can be used, you know, for catering, you know, decorations, you know, all, all, all of that, you know. I could still, you know, just realign my budget towards this. Yeah.
Yes, Sean.
How did you, how did you pull this idea? Like, how did you get feedback from the, from the veteran community or from?
Uh, yeah.
Abington, you said, was it, was it specifically the veterans' agent?
Yes, so, so I, it's towards the end of August, I, I reached out to the, I reached out to the Abington VSO and, and the Rockland VSO, and the, the response I got was like there wasn't a lot of enthusiasm behind doing a parade. I know Abington has been pretty vocal about not wanting to do a parade in, in, in the past. And then, when I, when I, when I tried to set up like a, like a planning board for, for the Veterans Day Parade, it was, I kind of got a, you know, hey, I think we should do something else instead. And so, just speaking to, to Adam Gunn over in Abington, you know, just kind of talking through some ideas, the idea came up, you know, of doing a luncheon sort of event.
Have you done any formal polling, kind of thing?
No, no, I, I have not done any sort of polling for this. If, if, if this does go forward, I think something that needs to happen is I need some, not like an R, like an RSVP, but I'm thinking I'm going to need some, some form of online registration just so I can get an idea of numbers. And then that would, that, that would kind of like dictate, you know, venue or stuff, stuff of, stuff of that nature, especially going forward in the future if this thing starts gaining a lot of traction.
Yeah, that would be a good problem, but I mean, the, on the other end, I would hate to get rid of a parade that some people really look forward to or like really value, you know. So, to have some formal polling, I think would just validate your, the feedback that you're already getting and your, kind of what your intuition is telling you, you know what I mean? I wouldn't like to be in the position where we get rid of a parade and people are upset about it, so. We just say we did our due diligence, and this is what we went with, you know, that seems to make sense to me. Not that you haven't, but, you know, some formal due diligence to say like, we polled the people that we have access to, and, you know, this is the feedback that we're getting, you know.
Do we know, it's the tri-town Veterans Day Parade, how long has that been going on? Are we like, like kind of quietly killing a hundred-year tradition here? Are we like, like kind of quietly killing a hundred-year tradition here or is there something else?
Long time.
I I think, I think we're at year seventy, we're in the, we're in the seventies. I I I I know that, but I, we're we're just in the unfortunate circumstance now where I I think this thing is quietly dying, you know, I I feel like I'm the one coming up and saying, let's just tear the Band-Aid, you know, and and, you know, and it and it puts everyone here in that predicament of, hey, we have to make a decision on this. So I I understand.
It's the fact that both, you know.
Abington.
Yeah, the two towns don't want to do it, so it's no more a, you know, tri-town parade.
Right, if they're, they're the ones that had bowed out first. Plus, um, there must be the expense of the police officers to cover this. So it seems like the expense that we might not have with the police, we may be able to do more for the veterans um and the veterans' family and families. And well, I don't have to tell you, but many of these veterans have a hard time walking a parade. Um, so I think this might be more comfortable for them. I agree with Sean that we should reach out and ask. I don't know how much time you have from now till then. Um, but if two other towns have dropped off and it wasn't us, I don't see how we could be holding the, you know, I'm the bad guy flag.
Except that it's our turn to host.
Mary Beth?
Right, but what do we host ourselves?
Yeah.
Have have Rockland and Abington formally said that they don't want to do this?
So there's no, I I've I've nothing written formal from them. I ju, I have, I've specifically, Abington, they said like, hey.
You say Abington, who specifically you refer to?
Adam Gunn, the the Abington Veteran Service Officer. He 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 told me straight up, I like, I'm not interested in in doing this.
Has he had a meeting with the with the Board of Select one over there and have they discussed it formally or?
I I I I don't believe there's been a formal discussion about this over in Abington. I just know if if we do this thing, this thing pretty much kind of solely falls on me and they're just kind of, kind of show up, do it one last time, and then going forward in the future, they're 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 out, they're they're done.
And the reason that they're done is because of the budget, because I just don't want to bring any disrespect. Um, it's it's fully a budget thing.
Yeah.
And and the less population, the dependent on the weather, all of the above.
And so and so speaking to to Adam, you know, the 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 decision that 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 he said, and I I I'm I'm gonna kind of paraphrase him here. Um, he said he believes that there's better ways to reach out to the veterans than than hosting the parade. I think it was for him, I I think coming from his angle, I, it it's like a lack of interest in 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 a parade altogether. So I, he's coming from it from that perspective. I, he he believes that there are other ways, better ways, better alternatives to to reach out to the veterans and, you know, camaraderie or.
And honor them.
And honor of the event, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Mary Beth?
I just had a couple of questions. So did you speak with Rockland and they felt the same way? It's all three towns that don't want to?
Um, so I reached out to, I reached out to Tim White. Um, I I haven't heard anything from Tim White over the the Rockland VSO whatsoever. I sent, I sent him an email about two weeks ago now, just, and I, no response. I tried calling. He was out for the week. Haven't heard anything from him. Um.
So Rockland could maybe still be interested. We don't know.
And so Ro- Rockland still could be on board. Um, I'm just under the opinion that I think if, now that Abington is looking like they're out, um, you know, especially, you know, this year, if if they want to do their own thing, we can still, I I can still do joint planning with Rockland if they if they still want to do a thing. Because I know they're, they have incredible veterans organizations over in Rockland with their VFW, their American Legion. Um, so, you know, and I, with with my connections here to the VFW and American Legion in town, I mean, that that would just be an easy, you know, coordination and cooperation with them.
Who is responsible of this year's tri-town parade?
Whitman.
Okay.
Couple of other questions. Would the luncheon and the service just be Whitman? Or would you be doing that together with Abington and Rockland separately or just Whitman do its own?
I I I'm I'm under the opinion that it is, it would be with who, Abington, more likely than not, they're they're doing their own thing. They're gonna host their own thing. I can see Rockland possibly exploring the the option of joining us and and we and we and we do a ceremony together.
And then I was wondering too, the cost of this memorial and luncheon service versus the parade? And how, how do you control like the amount of the people, attendees, you know, how do you get that out there? Like you said, you'd have to have some sort of RSVP ahead to know whether you're talking about a hundred people or 300 people or two towns or?
Yeah, and so I think that would just be like opening up a, like a, some sort of QR code. Um, and and then people could go on and then they could, you know, are, we have a, I could set up, you know, a three-week window where people could jump in, you know, I'm not gonna say like an RSVP, but just so I can get rough numbers in my head and then plan for 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 a little more on top of it.
Yeah, we've had functions at the VFW for the town in the past and it's been pretty well full. I mean, it's like 300 people go. So um, so you know that, you know, they'll do it. I don't know if they'll charge yes or no, you know, that, you know, where the fact that they're part of the veteran agency though. It's something you have to deal with, but yeah, just look at it. I mean, if that's the way it's gonna be, that's the way it's gonna be, as long as we're honoring the veterans one way or another. Yeah, there are no problem, yeah.
I I would just ask, I know you've you've got to plan something in two months, so yeah, obviously time is is a factor here. We're meeting again in two weeks. Can you just confirm with Rockland whether they're in or out?
Yes.
Because I think that if if Whitman and Rockland were still willing to plan something, we should at least hold what would be maybe one last parade before it does the rotation again in town start dropping off.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for all that work and starting soon. To be continued, Mary Beth Sads.
All right, that's it. Next on the agenda is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, is the Town Administrator's Report.
The only thing that, actually, skip the budget update. I think Sean might want to say on that.
Okay, did I miss something?
The budget update?
Oh, okay, sorry, Sean. Go for it.
Yeah, there are four things that I want to report out on. Um, just an update from the last meeting that we had. One, the Board of Assessors, and Heidi's here, um, did release $225,000. So that, I think, is is a a plus for the budget, although remember that that is one-time funds. So as far as talking about personnel and potentially helping with some of the the difficulties that we're having at town meeting, um, that's not a fix that really is sustainable. It's definitely moving in the right direction and it helps overall with the budget. But like I said, it's not, it's not a, it's one-time money. The Plymouth County Retirement Liability, that was definitely still a major focus for us, but we definitely got some negative feedback from Tom O'Brien, who's the the Treasurer of Plymouth County. He's basically saying although people have taken out a pension obligation bond in the past to do what we were thinking about doing, restructuring the the liability. So instead of paying off the 20, $21 million in five years, we push it out to 10, 10 years. People have done stuff like that in the past, but you do need special legislation to get it done. And right now, it doesn't look like special legislation is likely to get passed.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, although we'll still continue to, um, he might come to the next Select Board meeting to talk to us a little bit about it, which I think would be great. And there are some other people like Allison Sullivan that we've, um, we're gonna look to to sit down and discuss this with. So it's turned to more of a long-term strategy and not a short-term strategy, not something that will really have an impact on '26 or likely '27 budget. I still want to keep on the radar the indirect cost pertaining to to town trash and recycling service. That is something, if we did make that shift, that is sustainable money, you know, it's would be money that we would take in year after year. The downside is, remember, it costs about each person who's enrolled in the trash about $25. So we don't want to do that lightly. It's not something that we should, we should just jump in to do to solve a problem or something like that. But it is a, I think it is a mistake of accounting that we do want to ultimately correct whether we do it in the short term or not. Um, I think that's for us to decide, but that would help the budget, the fiscal '26 by about $150,000. And that's money that would be year after year, not one-time money. So keep that on the radar. And then lastly is the ambulance ambulance billing. Um, we have been drilling into that more deeply. Um, I do think that there are definitely some benefits of working with chief, working with a potential third party to um to help bring our percentages up on the amount of money that we're collecting. We're still working on strategies, but it does look, the more information that we get, it looks like there are some viable strategies that will will help. And again, that's not one-time money. That would be um money that would help with our efficiency year after year. It's not like a million dollars, nothing crazy, but it's not like $5,000. It could be a little bit of money that will help with the budget year after year. So that's another strategy that we're working on, you know, the budget.
That's it? I'll say. Um, I, yeah, I did skip over the Chairman's Report. Uh, I have nothing.
Town Administrator's Report, the only thing I wanted to mention is we did have a public meeting last Thursday evening with Good Energy, who's the consultant for the Whitman Electricity Aggregation. And a lot of, it was well-attended. I'd say there were over 100 people there who who came to that meeting. Um, that same Representative Rachel Ferdinand from Good Energy is going to the Council on Aging tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. So anybody who did not make the meeting last Thursday evening can certainly go to the Council on Aging at 10 o'clock tomorrow to get any questions or concerns answered there. Um, so there is just the the timeline to opt out of the Good Energy Plan is September 22nd. Um, and if you don't opt out before 20, uh, September 22nd, you're automatically enrolled. However, you can opt out at any time. You can also back opt-in at any time. And then the launch is actually on October 1st, and that's when the power flowing on the meter reads from October 1st onward. It was a 50-month agreement that the town went into, so prices will be locked in. Um, and the price that we locked in, it was a little over 14 cents. Um, and that is under what National Grid is currently offering. They're a little over 15 cents right now, but they only go out with their pricing for six months at a time. So we can't say that this 14 will always beat National Grid because we don't know what their future rates will be. But um for the bid, we felt that that was a good rate, so we took the opportunity to lock that in for 50, 500 months, which is good. That's all I have on that.
That it?
Yep.
Um, speaking about that, I talked to the young lady and and maybe Justin can go on this. As far as opting out, if you have a a second supplier, not National Grid, you don't have to opt out, you're already opt out. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Right, you don't have to fill out the forms, because I talked to the young lady before that. And then also when she was telling me, they are gonna put their rate on the internet, you know, when you search for cheap electricity, they're gonna be on part of that. And when your contract is up from, for your supplier, if they're cheaper than what you can get or anybody else, just go with them. You know, and you call the company and and they call National Grid and they say, okay, you're, you know, we're getting your energy from us now for this, for this address. They take care of it all and usually it takes three billing cycles, I think, two to three billing cycles for it to turn over with the new account. You know, so it'll be interesting. Okay? Yes, Sean?
We're going to executive session?
Yeah.
John Galvin High Street, um, as a member of the Camp Alice Carlton Committee, I'm requesting that I would be allowed to sit in in the executive session of that particular topic if that is allowable. Um, I promise to not let anybody know.
But by the executive session.
I think it's important as a member of the committee that I know what's going on so that we have an idea.
We do that?
We make that exception for public safety when we're talking about their unions. I see it as equivalent so long as he doesn't go back to Rockland and say what we're discussing.
And Kathy's on the committee and she'll be in it, but it's up, I think, to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have a problem. I mean.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. That's it? Okay, um, we need to go into executive session, sec, executive session pursuant to Master General Law 30A, number 21A 6, to consider the purchase and exchange lease of the value of real property in this property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And it's on the Camp Allison, Collison property. And then we'll have a second executive session pursuant to Master General Law C 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirement uh to review and approve executive session minutes of 10:22, 24, 11:12, 24, 11:26, 24, 12:02, 24, 12:17, 24, 2:25, 25, and 3:11, 25. And we'll be coming into open session just to adjourn, right? So I need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 Okay, we're now in executive session. We'll just wait till.